Ernie St. Pierre is going to be running the microphone for the audience. So, I want to thank him for helping tonight. And Mark Connors, he's over his freshman moderator experience. So, if he does as well as he did last night, we'll be very happy. I'm Richard Tripp. I'm a member of the VFW here in Derry. And like I said, I'm happy you're here. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to which we stand, and to God, to the people, to the citizens of this world. All right. A little microphone etiquette. This microphone is fairly directional, so when you talk like this, it doesn't amplify and the people that are videoing this won't hear it. But if you talk like this, like a rock star, people can hear you. So, please try and use the microphone that way. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Ernie. So again, we are here for the school board forum. If you're not on the right flight, now's the time to get off. The forum, if you saw it last night, is pretty straightforward. We're going to be basically just taking questions from the audience. And the candidates will then have the opportunity to answer those for two minutes each. We're going to start off with some opening statements. Each candidate will be able to give an opening statement for two minutes. Then we'll move into the question and answer session. And that will go basically until about 8:20 or so, 8:25, depending upon the volume of questions we have. And then we'll have a two-minute wrap-up where they can do a closing statement as well. So, just kind of a few rules before we get started. When you do take the mic, as Richard was saying, make sure you hold it up and speak into it. Please also introduce yourself with your name. We don't need an address tonight like you do at town hall, just, you know, name and whether you're a resident or a business owner would be great. To the candidates, if you watched last night, you kind of probably got a feel for it if you've seen it the last couple of years. You do have full two minutes. There'll be paddles over here. She will hold up the yellow paddle when you have 30 seconds left, and then the red paddle. And we do ask you that you kind of try and stop at that point. Last night, we had a couple of folks that went a little long, so let's not do that tonight. Just, you don't feel like you have to use the full two minutes, though. If you can answer concisely and you're done, that's fine. You don't have to go on and on for, you know, two minutes until the red paddle comes up. Also, if you do agree with something that someone else said, since it's a fairly large panel, you can agree with them, and, you know, that can be your answer too. But feel free to use the full two minutes. Just don't feel like you have to speak for two minutes if you don't want to. We will, again, there's a couple of folks streaming again tonight, which is great. We didn't know that ahead of time, but I know cable TV is filming. If anybody is at home and watching, I believe both on the Derry, New Hampshire Schools Facebook page and on the BDT page, this is being streamed live, I guess, by some of the folks in the audience. And if we do have time at the end, if there's no more questions in the audience here, we will take some questions that may come in online. So feel free to do that if you'd like, if you're watching from home. From the audience, please respect the candidates. We appreciate them all being here. There won't be any cross-talks, so you ask your question, and then each candidate will be able to answer that question. There's no real back-and-forth between you and the candidates. That's the format. We reserved the right to toss you out, I guess they said last night. I don't know that we had to do that to anybody, but I don't think we'll have to do it tonight too. So, before we get started on the school board candidates, there was an offer for other candidates to come and speak if they were running for an office that's not being debated. So, I do believe we have Dan Healy, who's running for town clerk, who wanted to say a few words about his candidacy. So, Dan?
Hi, everyone. My name is Daniel Healy. I am the current town clerk. I'm seeking reelection on March 12th. I have been the town clerk for the past three years. I've gone through the New Hampshire certification with the New Hampshire City and Town Clerks Association. I've networked with other clerks and tried to learn as much as possible. I really liked doing the job, so I'd like to ask for your vote on March 12th. I have signs in the back, and I'm going to put out some cards that have my Facebook page, if you'd like any more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And one of the school board candidates was unable to join us tonight. Her name tag is up there, but Ann Kop was not able to attend. I understand she's actually on her honeymoon, so congratulations to Ann. But she did send a representative to say a few words for her, so Dave, why don't you step out here just for the camera's purposes?
Okay.
And speak right into that mic, please. Put that right up to your mouth.
Is this working? Yeah, I guess it is.
Yeah.
I am not Ann Kop, but, okay, this is from Ann. "I raised my children in Derry, New Hampshire. They attended South Range, Grinnell, Barker, and Hood Schools. I'm running to give back to Derry by creating community engagement from the school board to the citizens. I would like to lead the board with strong collaboration and mutual trust, create district-wide round-robin meetings with school officials and the public."
Is this loud enough? Right up to your mouth.
Okay. "It not only matters for the children K through eight and for teachers at the schools, it matters to the community that supports the schools. I feel more work is needed in this area. I have spoken to many parents and taxpayers. They feel they've lost their voice. I would like to be that voice as a member of the school board advocating for policies to improve student achievement. Our school budget is to be used 100% to educate our children. We must address failing academic scores. Class enrollment is directly related to these academic achievements. The number-one reason families choose to move to a town with good schools is to move to a town with schools where they are rated the highest in academic achievement. Quite reasonable, wouldn't you say? Achievements can set a new standard of excellence for what students should know at each grade level. I would like to help define clear goals toward that vision." "American history would be nice," she writes. "If strong shared beliefs and values about what is possible for our students is overlooked, a system where scores fall below the standards, enrollment suffers, and schools may need to be closed. The people should be heard when these crises arise. Accountability and performance shall be tied together. It is the community's responsibility to hold the officials accountable. The school board should be our community education watchdog, making sure taxpayers get the most for their education dollars. A strong communication structure is needed to inform and engage people in setting and achieving district goals. We must maintain high standards, even in the midst of budget challenges. Enrollment should be up. We should not have to discuss closing a school, though that is where we are today. Exceptional education of our children should be our number-one priority. Enrollment will improve when we achieve this goal. We will win when our schools and community work together to create the excellent schools we want. And yes, parents need to know my stand on Common Core. Stop Common Core. Our children are not common. I ask for your vote on March 12th, 2019. If elected, I will do my level best to represent the families in our district. I continue to work hard to earn your vote. Townspeople would like to see great schools with their tax dollars being spent wisely, so wisely, in fact, that we can return surplus back to the taxpayer. I can be reached on Facebook or by email, annkop@2010@yahoo.com, or on Facebook. I would love to hear from you."
Thank you. David? Might be a dangerous game. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start off just from the alphabetically tonight with the opening statements. So Derek, that means you are the first up, so feel free to speak for two minutes and give us your opening statement, and then we'll just go down the line.
All right. Good evening, folks. I want to thank Richard and Ernie, as well as the VFW for hosting us, and Mark for moderating this evening. Also, I want to thank the audience, those that are attending either in person, watching the live stream, or those that will watch this at a future date. The Derry Cooperative School District has a long history of educating and readying our youth for a future that may either lead to college or entering the workforce. We've had extremely dedicated teaching staff, administrative team, school board, and over 5,000 bright young minds, all working to continue this great tradition. I joined the school board three years ago with a couple of concerns. First, we had experienced some diminishing assessment results. Second, there were real questions on how reduced state funding may impact future achievement. My background is that of a pharmacist graduating from nearby Northeastern University, and now a pharmacy owner of an independent compounding pharmacy. As a small business owner, I'm experienced with struggles relating to human resources, tight budgets, quality improvement, and government oversight, all of which need to be successfully addressed to create good customer service and quality products. This experience has helped me this past three years assist the school board, add administration, build the groundwork for the rejuvenation of our school district. With three children in the district, I have seen some of the early results of new curriculum, collaboration among teachers and administration, and facility improvements that I have proudly supported. I'm excited to see the continuation for the foreseeable future. I hope to further discuss my expectations and goals with you over the next couple hours. Thank you.
Next up is Tom Carden.
Hi, my name is Tom Carden. I'm a retired high school teacher of 34 years. I bring teaching experience to the school board and a conservative vote. I have been a town councilor, a state representative, and I'm currently on the Net Zero Committee. There are a couple of concerns that I have. Last week, the school board finally discussed closing a school after four years of study. And I think the time has come that we need to do that. The district has lost 1,300 students in the last 10 years in the elementary schools. They've lost almost 700 students. So, the time has come. I know the school board put a threshold of 1,925 students before they closed that school, but the time to start planning is now, because it's going to take two or three years to get that process going. And, you know, you want that to be seamless, and you don't want to continue to kick the can down the road for as many years as you have. And also, the last meeting, Matt brought up a pretty good suggestion. He brought up having a five-to-10-year plan, and I think that will be especially important for budgeting and infrastructure, so that we could have just gradual increases of the school budget instead of, you know, the peaks and valleys that we have seen over the years. The relationship between Pinkerton Academy has been terrible over the years, and I think it's just a poor example for education in Derry. I think that we should expect our education partners to have a better relationship, and this is the perfect time for us to start doing it, because in three years, we have the contract with Pinkerton Academy coming up. I'm also a member of the Net Zero Committee. We've kind of quietly been working on energy projects for Derry. As many of you know, we have the, I see my red flag is up. I'm going to bypass that, and I just want to go directly to the New Hampshire Assessment scores, which-
So, Tom, why don't you maybe take the first couple of seconds of your first answer to do that, because we want to keep going.
Okay.
Next up is Nick Delatwa. I think I got that right?
You did, Mark.
Beautiful.
So, my name is Nick Delatwa. I'm a 35-year-old father of three here in the Derry School District. I have a child at West Running Brook, one at East Derry, and I have a one-year-old at home. So, my kids are going to be in the school district for the next 18 years, which is the main reason that I'm sitting up here today. It's crucial for my family and myself to live in a community in which challenges them, both fundamentally and educationally. And I see Derry with a lot of opportunity in what we can do in our schools, and I want to see my children and the children of the community succeed at the highest level. I'm the current chair of the Greater Derry-Loninydary Chamber of Commerce. It's our job to advocate for small business owners and our membership throughout the region. In doing so, we peek at legislature, we talk to our legislators, we stay true to our members and advocate for them. And I think that in this role, it's our job to do just that, but for our taxpayers and for our kids. They are our constituents. They are our membership. So if I can do that for our local economy, I want to take that and bring that to what we can do for our children. Thank you.
Next up is Matt Levitt.
Oh, you have to hold the button. Ah, there we go.
It's a 1970's mic.
Yeah, I like it. It's classic. Hi, my name is Matt Levitt. Thank you, everybody here, for coming out, and for everybody at home who's watching, hopefully a few people there. I was interested in getting involved in the school board last year. I ran for school board last year. Unfortunately, did not win, but there was a couple of main reasons why I ran. Last year, I ran mostly on communication. I found that the schools in general were not doing a great job of communicating with the constituents in Derry, and the people in Derry. That was a problem to me, because I didn't see a lot of discussion, whether that was online or in print, well, a little bit in print, but to me, it was a problem that wasn't being addressed at that point. They've done a better job a little bit with communication, since I brought it up conveniently, but they can do better. I think that they can definitely do better. They can do better in a lot of different areas. One of those areas, of course, is the education of the children themselves. We are not ranking very highly at all, I'm sure all of us will be talking about that later, in our state in relation to all of the other towns in the state. And I want to see those scores come up. I understand that in general, scoring is, you know, is one form of measure, but I want to see those increase. I come from a quality assurance background. I understand high quality. This is what I do for my job, and I want to be able to increase the quality of our schools and help to improve them over the next three years. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say, I have a ZBA case that I need to attend this evening, so I may depart early, but done everything I can do to rearrange that agenda. So, the folks hosting this evening are aware of that, but it's probably an hour and a half away yet. So, I just want to thank everybody who's sitting up here, including Ann, for stepping up and serving your community. This last year has been kind of an interesting year. Hands full, a lot of contentiousness, wonderment about, you know, off of the non-binding referendum a year ago, or the vote to consolidate the district. This was a trying time throughout the year, even for some of my fellow board members. But I think in the end, where we have come to over the last 11 months is a better place that's starting to address some of the issues that I've already heard spoken of here. You know, just my history, you know, prior to being on the board, a lot of people recognized me as someone who was going up and trying to amend a budget on subsequent years, three years in a row. Each of those years, what people don't realize is that each of those years, that budget was proportionally smaller than the year before that went with the budget that was being produced. So it was not reckless by any means, and I have continued to maintain that performance throughout my three years on the board. So, at any rate, I just want to make that point clear, and seeing that my time's winding down, I'll wrap up by saying thank you for everybody that's showing up here and representing your community.
And Brenda Willis.
Hi, as Mark said, my name is Brenda Willis, and I'm a candidate for reelection for the Derry School Board. Thank you to the VFW and Derry Community TV for hosting this forum. My husband and I have lived in Derry for 37 years. We've raised two children who attended the Derry Schools. They're both married with families of their own now. We're the proud grandparents of Joey and Elizabeth, and look forward to their first day of school in five years in Derry. Along with my fellow board members, we've worked hard to make positive change in our school district. In her first year as superintendent, Dr. Connis Grecorian has reassigned and refocused duties to better serve our students and families. The Derry School Board will update our strategic plan with the use of the Facilities Report and other reports, such as an enrollment study that will be done and a special education study that is being done. I look forward to the many opportunities and challenges ahead. I'm a very active member of our school district. I participate in school activities at each school with students and families. I volunteer in our schools and in our community. I have participated with our staff in training for new curriculum and safety training. The time I spend in our schools observing firsthand the benefits of the goals and the work that we set forward, I lost my place, sorry, as well as the efforts that our staff provides are, I totally lost my place, I'm so sorry. Those times that I get to spend in the schools with our kids and our staff give me a better perspective of what we have set forward for them and how they can implement it. Educating our children to the best of our ability is critically important. I am passionate and dedicated to our community, our school district, and most importantly, our children. As a lifelong advocate for children, it has been my honor to serve the citizens of Derry and to be a voice for our children. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks for all the opening statements. So now, we're going to move into the question and answer session. I'm going to actually ask, if you have a question, go ahead and raise your hand. Ernie's going to bring a microphone around to you. Again, speak directly into the mic. I want to go ahead and pick our first person from the audience who has a question. We're going to rotate so that nobody's getting the first question all the time. So, anybody have the first question out there, or it's going to be a short night? I don't see any hands up. All right. And we're going to start on the opposite end, since Derek got to start. So Brenda, you'll take the first one, then it'll go to Derek, and we'll rotate around, and then we'll rotate one seat each time.
Jonathan Dugan. "I look at true leadership as not waiting to have the title to perform the role that you want. This is especially important to me for the elected officials that will earn my vote tonight. With that in mind, what specifically have you done already that has benefited the school district, or possibly another school district?"
Again, folks, you're really going to get that mic right up next to your mouth, so it's awkward.
I'm thinking of a long list. I think probably one of the best things that I can think of, that I've been a part of with the Derry School District, is the formation of the next charter school that does benefit our students who are not successful in a traditional high school setting like Pinkerton. We've seen great results there with our students graduating and moving on to secondary education, whether it's a two-year, a four-year, or in the military, or to a job. So that's probably one of the best examples that I can give. I guess that's good.
So I think we have two mics up there, right? There should be, you want to pass that one down?
So, over the past three years on the school board, I've sat on the curriculum committee, and during that time, you know, understanding our achievement tests have been low. We know that achievement tests are only one factor that we look at, but we really didn't have a goal for our staff to look forward to, to address that issue. We've brought in new curriculum. We've brought in consultants. We've added math coaches. But there was really no specific goal. So one of the things we developed about a year ago was with the New Hampshire State Assessment Test, which is a new test to us. We implemented a goal for 10% improvement over three years. And that got in some good buy-in from the staff. It gave them something to work towards, a visual that, you know, everyone needs goals. So I think it's probably the first thing I can think of that I think is going to have the, we saw some good results this year, and I think it's going to continue over the next couple of years.
Most of, excuse me, most of my work has been done on the town side of the town, not the, most of my work has been done within the town. I haven't done a lot for the school board. But what I do bring is I bring an outside perspective, and I'm most certainly bringing the perspective of a teacher that spent 34 years in education. And, you know, one of the things that I think about when I look back over my career, and one of the most important things to me, is the students that have contacted me after I've retired. If you ever get a chance to look at my Facebook page, you'll see a couple of my former students that talk about me. And the most important thing that the students would say to me, and every year didn't go by, that a student would come up and, you know, say, "Hey, Carden, you know, I just want to thank you, because if I didn't have you, I wouldn't have graduated from high school." And I think those are the types of things that I would bring to the school board that are helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, John, very much for your question. I think to Tom's point, I don't have a lot of history within the school district. This would be my first foray into town-wide politics in general. But what I do have is history in the local community. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce now for five years. When I first joined, the immediate need that I saw was a need for young professionals, as most of our board and most of our membership skewed older. So I went out and found a plethora of young professionals who were new to business, new to entrepreneurialship, and brought them in and created the Derry-Loninydary Young Professionals Network, which was an arm of the Chamber of Commerce. In doing so, I obtained a board seat. Within four years on the board, I was elected chair. And what that speaks to is the leadership role that I took within that boardroom, each and every meeting that we had, and each and every day. I'm a huge advocate for Derry as a town and the community as a whole. I'm out everywhere. I constantly advocate for our businesses. I preach to everybody to come here, to enjoy what we have to offer. And what I want to do now is bring that passion to the school board. So I bring leadership to a boardroom, and I've been a leader in everything I've ever done. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So, I attend the regular school board meetings. I try to attend every one I can, but recently, I've been tending the school board meetings. Unfortunately, not enough people are attending them, which is a shame. And I try to speak for the people of Derry, for myself as well, to try to take action and have the school board take action, and hear our concerns. I was, in terms of my contributions to schools in general, I was a volunteer in my daughter's kindergarten. I did that all year long. I also did substitute teaching. I know it's not really teaching, it's kind of teaching, but it really got me a taste of what it's like to be in the school, to feel like, you know, the curriculum. I was teaching the classes. I would go in and I would talk to the kids, and it's a really, really tough job to do, I got to say. So, you know, hats off to all those substitute teachers out there. You go in there and you kind of go blind, and you deal with, you know, any range of grades. You don't know which grade you're going to be teaching day to day. And I had a blast. I loved doing it. I loved the variety of it, and being able to have direct contact with those kids, and to be able to give them lessons and, you know, get a little taste of it. I was really loving that part of it. So I know what it's like. I've been in the schools, and I really hope to develop those relationships with the teachers going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, you know, prior to being, well, once I was on the board, were assigned committees, and I think that that's a key point to whatever any of the volunteers that step up, you know, need to understand is that your limits are a lot of times restricted to those committees. So for myself, you know, I stuck to my committees. Mine were on negotiations, and I was on buildings and grounds. I was also on the manifest committee. They aren't hard-hitting, but I believe sometimes you put it in a place for a purpose, and I think the significant value that I brought to the board was the sitting on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. This was a major undertaking of looking at what we were projecting and what we were trying to achieve. And to be honest with you, I thought they were joking with me, because as I opened with it, I was more of that cost analysis guy. These folks threw a $10 million expenditure on my lap, and I really thought it was kind of a joke. But this ended up benefiting our own district, and there was some scrutiny to our choice and what we were doing with it. But it falls in line with some of what the Net Zero is doing, in that same spirit. So this was my big thing that I did. This last year, because of what we were, what the town was looking for off the non-binding referendum, the Legislative and Liaison Subcommittee was something that I created. referendum, the Legislative and Liaison Subcommittee was something that I created. Typically, the chair has dealt with those kind of issues in the past singularly, but this became more of a team effort. And it's evolved into not just the conversations that we have with the town council back and forth, but also opening the door with our legislators, creating a dialogue with them, and what we need to achieve up in Concord. And also some unification with other sending towns in regards to Pinkerton. So those are my hotspots, as well as Celebrity Reader Day, which usually comes around in March. You get invited to go and read to the kids, and it's a neat experience. So there you go. Thanks.
Great. That was great for our first round. Ernie St. Pierre is going to have the next question, and then we'll come to you on the next one. And this question will start again with Derek down the end, since we're rotating.
Hi, St. Pierre, Derry, New Hampshire. Having lived there for over 40 years, and having children who've gone through the school districts, and failed with the school district because of the incompetence of the school district. I want to know what your thought process is about us people now, the elderly people that still pay the taxes and have the burden of the high cost of the schools that we have. I don't want to hear that London-Derry's students cost this much, Concord's students cost this much. This is Derry. That's all I care about is Derry. I don't pay my taxes in Concord, I don't pay them in London-Derry, I don't pay them in Winham, I pay them in Derry. So you're responsible to make sure that my taxes get spent the right way and fairly, and keep them down. And you need to start working together with the town council a lot more than what you are, because they're the ones that get the brunt of it. When you guys don't do your job and save money for the taxpayers, all the tax bills go up.
So is there a question? Give a quick?
I just want to know what you will do to keep my taxes down.
Okay. Derek, tax question.
All right, I'm going to kind of answer a couple of things that came up in that length. First of all, I apologize if you didn't have a great experience with the school district. I think a long time ago, the focus in schools was based on grade level, and if you're in the third grade, you're expected to read at third grade, and then you're pushed to fourth grade, and you're expected to read at fourth grade, and then they move on. Nowadays, which I think is going to get to my point, is we're looking at personalized learning now. So if we have a child in a classroom that maybe is a little bit behind, we're going to treat them at their level. We're not going to expect them to understand the level that, the number level that they're at. So the dollar value is going to become more efficient, because we're going to take that lesson plan and make it appropriate for that student. So as far as taxes, every year, we go through a budget cycle, a couple months in length. We whittle it down as much as we can. Over the past 10 years, we've cut staff, we've cut maintenance costs, we've neglected roofs, we've done just about everything we can. This year, we were negotiating over pennies. At one point, the option was to cut all after-school activities. And I think the idea was, well, we want to keep a well-rounded education. And that isn't that because the budgets are high that we're doing, we're not frugal. We go through budget cycles very, very seriously. Every single line gets addressed, and we still want to be able to make sure that we can provide a good education for our students.
Thank you for the question, Ernie. As many of you know, I'm fairly conservative when it comes to taxes. And, you know, like you, I look at the spending, I look at the budget that goes up every year in Derry, and the scores don't show what's happening with the education. And we should be putting out a much better product than the school district already, especially with the money that's being spent. And, you know, that was one of the reasons why I put down a five-year plan, so that, you know, that we don't see our taxes go up and down, up and down. I mean, I know probably members of the school board are going to say that, well, they only went up $200,000 this year. Well, they're going to go up a lot more than $200,000 this year. They're going to, if the contract for the teachers passes, that's another $660,000. If the municipal workers, if their contract goes up, that's another $150,000. There was $400,000 left over last year that really should have gone, the whole $860,000 that was left over, that should have gone back to the taxpayers, and it didn't. I was the only one, and actually, I was the only one at the meeting, and the only one that got up and spoke and asked the school board to make sure that all that money went back, and it didn't. So, you know, even though it looks like the school budget only went up $200,000 this year, it went up about one point, I guess my figure's 1.4 million. So, you know, I'm a fiscal conservative, and I watch the bottom line. And, you know, unfortunately, we only have, you know, a limited number of people that show up to the school district meeting to set that budget. And we need a lot more people to come out and really, you know, put a budget up that's comfortable with the taxpayers, because it's too high.
Thank you very much for your question, Ernie. I think that when you look at the budget versus the product in which we're getting for the budget, I think that we can all see that there's something lacking. But we also have to see that over the last 10 years, we've lost $7 million in funding from the state, as well as we've lost contributions to our teachers' retirements. I think that when you look at things like that, the school board has a duty to challenge the legislators, and to challenge all the reps that we vote every general election, to do something about it. And I think that Jim Morgan's been the most vocal about this when it comes to town meetings, and that there needs to be a more symbiotic relationship between the town, the school board, and the state legislature. I think that when you bring up the point, Tom, of there was a close to a million-dollar savings in taxes, well, sorry, in money, and it should have gone back to the taxpayer. As much as I understand that we should be trying to lower the tax rate and giving money back, what we also need to look at, again, is the product in which we provide. I think that some of that savings need to be split and reinvested in the children, and some of that needs to go back to our constituents. I do share a responsibility to the taxpayers to be responsible, and to do everything we can to keep our taxes low. But we also need to increase our school rankings. And you're not going to do that by continuously cutting programs and cutting funding. There has to be a balance. And I think if elected, I'd be wanting to sit in a room and talk about all the things that could potentially happen, and brainstorm ideas, and bring in people with differing opinions, so that we can all come up with a collaborative approach for doing the right thing by our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie, for your question. I've seen a lot of dialogue recently, in the past, you know, year or two, with increasing valuations of housing and, you know, increasing school board budgets at the same time. And it bothers me, it bothers a lot of people. The vast majority of our budget is the schools. I think that this is, I mean, this is the case for a lot of different towns, but the fact is, it is a huge deal to increase a budget, even a slightest, even the slightest amount. In the last few years alone, there was a 5%, I believe it was 5% increase a couple of years ago. Last year was much, much better, was a very small percentage, but this year, again, is another couple of percent. And that's every single year. And I see that, I've seen the people talking about it. I've seen my own taxes go up on my house, and some people's taxes went down, but mine went up. And it bothers me to see those numbers continue to rise. You know, to Nick's point, I agree that there needs to be something done about this, but again, at the same time, I don't think that we should definitely necessarily give, you know, if we have money coming back, we need to, we do need to reinvest it to get our schools, it's a balance between the schools and the town. I see this as a very difficult situation for the town itself, but I am absolutely invested in getting this budget to be under control. And that means working with the town council, that has not been done enough, and working with the state reps, which has not been done enough. I think that people need to understand that collaboration is the best way out of this situation, and is going to make all of this town better. Thank you.
I'm going to start off by saying that when I don't see people at a budget season, and they're creating controversy, and trying to run off of controversy, that's a problem. Now, in regards to the $430,000 and the $800,000 that Tom was speaking of, you should understand that that relationship that you're speaking of that doesn't exist is what occurred between the school board and the town council. And that money was negotiated with, as a group effort, to put that money aside, okay? So if you're going to come in and you need to start creating controversy, and that's what you're going to run on, please understand what you're talking about. In regards to Mr. St. Pierre's question, you know, Ernie and I know each other, and I think we can relate to similar points. You know, there's things that go on behind all of this that sometimes people don't understand. So I guess I'm going to put it in a cost-child-student-accomplishment kind of comparison. You know, one of the things that I knew earlier in the year was that we had a literacy issue. And Mary Ann, Dr. Connors-Gurkorian, brought it up a year ago. And it was something that I knew that we needed to get taken care of. It's something that I asked her to, I pushed that forward on the agenda a little further. I think I speak about it in the chairman's overview in our annual budget. I think it's important that if you want to know where we've been, what we've done this past year, take a look at what I wrote. It answers to that question. And it was a cost consolidation below the staffs that we cut this year in this past budget. You know, please, I'm happy that you're going to step up and that you want to serve the community. If the voters vote for that, that's fine. But some of these points, the symbiotic relationship and the contract warrants, they aren't part of the budget that we negotiated and brought forward to the voters. And it's really important that if you're going to run, that I, for three years before I ran, I went to budget meetings in the fall, and I wasn't part of the fiscal advisory committee. Okay? Thank you.
So I'm going to start by saying, where are you? I'm going to start by saying, I agree with Derek. I'm sorry that you didn't have a good experience with the Derry School District. I do think we've made a lot of changes. And like Derek said, a lot of them are around differentiated instruction for each child. So our staff, with our new curriculum that we've put in place, is able to look at each child and see where they are, and meet them where they are. And if they can't meet them, we find another way to do it. If we need an assistant, or if we need a different book, or a different program for them, we work really hard to do that. It's not always the easiest situation, and it's not always easy to find what a child needs, but we, I do believe we work really hard at that. I'm going to defend Lynn a little bit here, because Lynn and Councilor Morgan developed a committee that the town council and the school board worked together. So there were representatives from the town council, representatives from the school board. They met regularly and talked about the issues that we have, and talked about the issues that the town council has. They met with state reps and with our senator, and tried to at least put all that information forward so that everybody knows where everybody is on the same page. And that's, again, not always easy, because the school district is a moving target. Tomorrow, we could have five kids enroll in a school that we weren't expecting. So it's always changing, and some of those children come to us with a variety of special needs that require additional services. And sometimes they're costly, but it's our job to educate children, and that's exactly what we should do. So, again, I'm sorry that you didn't have a good experience, but we really are trying hard.
Hi there. Oh, sorry. My name is Amy Rayoum. I live here in Derry. One of my sons goes to Hood, and he's part of the New England Center for Children Partner Program. And my other son attends East Derry. My heart rate's jumping out of my chest, so don't mind me if I mumble a little. Both of my children are not going to raise your test scores. They both have IEPs over 30 pages long. They both have individualized curriculum, as Brenda was mentioning. A specific curriculum was ordered for my son this year for safety skills, because he has no stranger danger. And there was nothing in the district, so they found one that worked for him. So I want to say thank you for all the ways that Derry School District meets and continues to meet each of my son's special needs. So there's a saying in our world, in the special needs parents world, what happens when the bus stops coming? So my son's bus comes, and in about seven years, the bus is going to stop coming to my house. And so with Derry being so passionate about serving the needs of my children, which I appreciate all of you doing, and being here and asking for my vote, I am wondering, how will you transition meeting those needs in collaborating, whether it's with the Chamber of Commerce, with the town council, with community services? My son, my older son is going to need the same support when he turns 21. There are federal programs, but as you know, there's wait lists. I do appreciate Lynn, and I want to say Dan, has been advocating for our kids on the legislative side. I do appreciate that. But it's a big question. There are programs, ACT at Pinkerton, the ILE, and the NAC. All of these children are going to need community-based supports when they turn 21. And I want to know, what does that look like for you to help them transition to community-based supports?
Tom, you're going to be the first one on this one?
Most of my 33 years of teaching was spent in the Culinary Arts Department. I was the director of the Culinary Arts Department at Somerville High School in Massachusetts. And we had a number of students with IEPs. And, you know, one of the things that I would say to somebody who has a student with an IEP is push them toward the CTE programs. Because one of the things that we did was, we took students who probably never would have done anything, and we were able to work with them and give them skills so they could go out and work, and get a job, and make a living. And I'll give you a perfect example of that, was we had a student that was legally blind. And she came in, and she was a waitress, she worked on the line, she did prep. And we got her a job working at Tufts University. And I had gone in there a couple of years later with a field trip. There she was, running around, just happy as anything. So, you know, those types of programs, those CTE programs, I think are very important for, you know, for students like you have. Because they offer training, they offer good training, and they're able to get jobs that are, they can go out and make money. You know, most of my kids, they didn't want to go to college, they couldn't care less. But you know what? I gave them a skill that they could use, and they could go out and work, and they could make money with. So that would be my best advice to you.
I'm not going to sit up here and make up an answer. Okay? I'm not going to do it. You're welcome. I don't have enough information available to even give an educated opinion about it. But what I will tell you is that when I don't know something, I seek out the right people and ask the right questions. And if given the opportunity to do so on the board, I would seek out educated professionals who could help me make a better decision for what we, as a town, and as a school board, could provide for your children. My children are on IEPs in school as well. They do not have the same level of attention that your children have. And I don't know what you do with those kids after they age out. So I think that we're all challenged to figure that out and see what we can do. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ernie, for the question. As you may know, I also have a child who has some special needs, but he gets a lot of support from us, and I attend his IEP meetings myself also. I'm very invested in the special education system. I think it's doing a very, very good job. I've dealt with both Grinnell and now Barca, and I absolutely love the people who are there. They're great, they're very supportive of us. My goal would be to obviously be in a similar situation, where I'm raising, with my wife, of course, my son, who's going to be growing up, and that's one of my biggest fears, is my son who's, who's gonna be growing up and, and, and that's my, one of my biggest fears is, is, you know, will he be able to do these things on his own? And we've been making some great progress, but that's, that's one of the areas that I, I also wanna look into. I'm, I'm, I see that the programs that were referred to, the CTE programs, they're fantastic at Pinkerton. And I, I think it's really important to also think about potentially starting up a CPAC group, which is the Special Education Parental Advisory Council. And what that basically is, is, you know, is a group of people who get together to, to advise on special education. We don't have that in Derry right now. It's a requirement in Massachusetts. And New Hampshire is just kind of like a, you know, you may wanna do it. I think it's a great idea because we can come together and all of us can talk about these things together and, and solve these problems. And, and I have a vested interest in that, so, thank you.
So those are all good answers and they're accurate answers. They're accurate to what you go through when you're on the board. Everybody on these boards and, and the boards across the town all have different backgrounds. They all bring different strengths to the board. It's not just about one data assessment. It's about how the group works collaboratively in the same direction. There's some disagreements, but the answers are accurate and they're good. And they're a similar answer to what I was faced with back in the spring when I, when I first started steering the ship. And that was a group of parents that came forward and, and felt isolated. They were facing similar, similar challenges. And that's what you, those are the kind of things that you're going to have to find answers for or delegate or, or see if we have the resources within the district. It's, it's what creates the subcommittees that you work off of or develops those or develops some kind, something that you adopt to those subcommittees. So my compliments for you on that. And I would, I'm faced with the same answer, Amy, is that I don't have that answer. I bet Brenda might, 'cause historically, well, I don't wanna refer to her in that way, but, you know, she brings that kind of resource and that's, you know, Tom might bring that resource, you know, have better answers 'cause he's been out there that way. So that's the best answer. So we would find that information for you if it's available, okay?
You put me right on the spot. Because I don't have an answer, but I have been working to get an answer because we've had this conversation. And it is, it's a hard situation to be in for you and your children. We are, I will say the district is working on a binder of information that will benefit special education parents and regular education parents if they're interested in having the information as well. But I think that that would be something that we need to also look into to add to that binder. I think there needs to be more legislation that protects your children and you as a parent. And I'm thinking about some of the programs that Next reaches out to for their students. Not that their students are all special, special education students, but they reach out to the community for different capstone projects and different internships for their students. And that may be something that we can also look into. But I think for, for your high school's child especially, we need to be working closely with Pinkerton to make sure that there is an avenue for them. And, you know, we need to make sure that our district, who is responsible for your children, has the information that they need to advocate for you if that's necessary. But I, I'll keep working for you.
Okay, so we're gonna go to one question. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna add a commentary on this, on this. Oh, I'm sorry, Derek, you still have to, okay, go ahead. Sorry, my fault. Ran out of line. Again, last night, too.
That's all right. I'll be brief anyway, so. I'll mirror Nick on this. I really don't have that answer. Last fall, the school district did authorize funding to conduct a study through an outside consultant to look at our entire special education program. Like you mentioned, I think we do a pretty good job overall, but maybe we're missing something along the way. So we wanna take a good look at everything. And maybe after school, after they, after graduation is, can be a component of that. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Again, just before I go to the next question, one, one comment I'll make, working with nonprofit organizations, and I'm sure you deal with, you've probably reached out to quite a few. But this is an issue also in the foster care end of things where when children hit 18, their service is basically in. It's a real conundrum for a lot of kids who basically are still kids and they're aging out of all of the programs that are provided for them up until the age of 18. So I would suggest that the school board, whoever they are, as well as any parents, there are a lot of great programs in the nonprofit world and there's really a need for that collaboration. So I'm hoping maybe that's an opportunity for everybody. So I think actually Richard had the next question, but you'll be next, so, yep. Oh, oh, well, that, Richard, she says directed, it's directly related. So I don't know if you wanna give up the mic for a moment and let her wrestle it from Amaya.
Hi, I'm Elvin. So my question is also about special ed. I can't any closer. What do you think are the current challenges that the special ed department faces? And what do you think is the best way to address those challenges? Because we have 1,100 kids identified in the district, which is a big amount. So what is being done for them?
Nick, you're gonna start on that one? Thank you, Richard.
I think my answer for this question is gonna be very similar to the last one. Again, this is a learning thing for me when it comes to things like that. I bring a different skill set to the board than just having the knowledge of all the available programs that, that are there now and realistically what we can do today. My plan is to, to collaborate with professionals and look towards what we can do better in the future. So I'm gonna give this mic to Matt.
This one's great. I love this one. Thank you for the question. I think my, well, from personal experience, I, my, my biggest issue, I guess, I mean, I, I think, I, I don't wanna knock the, the special education staff. They're doing a fantastic job. They really are. I see it on a regular basis. I, I think that the number one thing that I might wanna look at is communication. I think that the, the communication between the staff and the, the parents, kind of on, on all levels. I've had, we've had some, some difficulties in the past with, not necessarily if we ask for something, we, we get an answer. But the fact that we would have to ask for certain things, I think that we can do a better job of communicating with the parents to make sure that they're, that they stay, people stay in touch with them. It's, it's a very difficult situation having a child in, in the special education system because you really don't know what's going on. A lot of times with, with some of my other kids, I can, you know, I've got four kids in the, in the, in the schools right now. And for the most part, I can, I can kind of trust that they're getting a, a very good education and that they're doing well in school. And, and you know, you just kind of like trust that they're gonna come home, they'll be fine. When you have a child in, who needs a little bit extra assistance, it's a big worry. I, I feel it. And, and my wife and I feel it all the time and we, we worry about our, our child. And so when we're not getting regular communication, even though it may seem like a really small thing, to us, it's a big thing. And that's one area I would definitely try to look at. So thank you.
Thank you. And, and my, I, I made a reference in my last segment and I didn't realize that was you sitting there. And I think, so you've seen the, the resource that we've presented to you. You know, often there is a cost factor to that that plays into this. And I think we've pointed that out last spring as well. So it's always coming down to that, that aspect. But I think that overall, what our district has done over the last 18 months, starting to make better transitions towards those services, I think are, are the best first steps or perhaps the best steps in general that we can make. Because I don't believe those are your, the first steps that the district has made in regards to parents who have the same expressions that, that you'd have had. So that's my best answer there I can give you.
I think one of the things that we've done to improve special education is partnering with the NACC group. We, that's a program for children with autism. It's, it's been a big benefit to our children in our elementary schools. We've moved it into the middle schools. And we've worked collaboratively with Pinkerton to add a program there as well for our students. So that definitely benefits our, our students there. I agree with Matt. I don't think you can communicate enough. And we're constantly learning that people, used to be, you tell people things three times or they see it three times and that's when they got it. Now it's seven because we have so many different ways of communicating. So I, I think that we can always communicate better, whether it's special education or regular education. And I do agree that, I'm, I'm happy that we're working on the binder. It's, it, it was brought to us by a parent, the idea. And I think it's a really good idea. It puts things into perspective for parents and for staff so that there's always resources available for people and also information about what is an IEP? How do you go to an IEP meeting? Those are all important things, even when you know it, when you get into a room and you're the parent and there's a whole room full of staff, school staff, it's a little nerve-wracking, kind of like sitting here. And I, I do understand that. I've actually been asked to attend special ed meetings with parents and I, I have gone along as a support. So I've got a yellow sign, but that, I, I agree. I think we could do better communicating. And I think the NACC program is a big start for us.
Okay, yeah, I think the NACC program was gonna be my example. So I think traditionally it's been difficult to find programs sometimes for students. A lot of times they've been out of district. Sometimes the ones that would match perfectly that student were full. And so obviously the best option would be to keep them in district in our own programs and that NACC programs offer that option. We're, we're, we're funding a new NACC program at Barker this year. So that will help keep our children in our district with their peers, which also traditionally has meant it's also less costly to help educate those children than sending them out of district as well. So there's kind of a twofold benefit there. One other kind of minor issued staff that had in the, in prior years was having enough staff throughout the day, particularly at the end of the days, to cover students in one-on-one programs. So this year, one of the contracts for the assistants addresses that by extending their school day. So we'll have proper coverage for the entire school day for those children.
Thank you. One of the things I, I did, I, I worked with a number of special needs throughout my career. Probably more than half of my students were, were, had an IEP. And we're kind of mainstream through our, our class. But the most important thing that I would tell you is to stay engaged, make sure you attend the meetings. If you have questions, call the teachers, call the counselors, but, you know, don't, don't let it go. You know, stay, stay on top of it because, you know, that's, that's what their job is. Their job is to, to make sure that they take care of, of your, of your kids. And that's about the best advice that I could give you. Thank you.
And now we'll go back to you, Richard.
Thank you for taking, thank you for taking my question. I'd like to ask a question on something that's been a really hot topic at the school board meetings, closing a school. One of the things that I understand, one of the reasons for closing a school is our student population is dropping. If we were to close a school, I also understand that there'd be about a $1 million savings from closing a school. The question I have is how would you propose using the money that's saved from closing a school within the school district?
And I think, Matt, right, you're starting off on this one, Matt?
No pressure. So, yeah, the, 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 the closing of a school is a very, very, very tricky thing. You definitely wanna balance the, the, the educational equality of all of the children with the reallocation of all those children inside of those different schools. That, that's the first and foremost issue in my mind, is making sure we don't lose the quality of education. The, the, one thing Erica Cohen talked about in one of the meetings was, was to take, take a look at the socioeconomic levels of some of those kids and try to do a better job of distributing those kids and giving them a better support system in those schools. I think it's a great idea. I, I highly value that. And that's what I would try to do too, to help boost the schools, even if we had to close a school. I think if we're talking about dollar figures, we have to balance that with boosting the educational qualities and saving money. And I do feel that it does need to be a split. We did this when we had a, when we had a bit of money come back and some of that money came back to the town and some of that money was used in the schools to help bring down the tax rate. I think that that would have to be continued. I think that we can invest in the schools in certain things, full-day kindergarten. I think it was a great idea. And improving our technology in our schools to help our kids in the 21st century really, you know, move forward. So I think it's a balance that I would like to do and, and definitely just keeping that quality of education for our kids and improving it if we can.
So this year, I asked during the budget seasons for two key things to be brought forward during the budget sessions and, and what those projections were. We've had a transition in our head of the maintenance area for the district. So that became an evolving point that was this individual, Jeremy, that we hired. This was a big key for him. And what he did is he brought forward the costs that we're looking for in the future, the next four years probably, as well as some of the technology aspects. You haven't seen the projections on maintenance ever brought forward to the budget season through the budget sessions as you did this year. Sometimes you'll see little increments, but this is the first time that the full projections were given. The tax cuts, the, the cuts in cost savings on that 1.2 million, from, from myself and my point of view, until we get a legislative change as far as how funding comes back to the district, wasn't necessarily gonna save or give taxpayers back any money, but it was gonna help stabilize and at least give us a solid path going forward. So that was how I saw that, those funds working. I, I wasn't, I, I didn't wanna cut programs. And like I said, the 33 cents or whatever the projection was, was not going to go back to the taxpayer. So that's how I handled that. Thank you.
Before I could make a decision on what to do with that money, I'd have to know what the cost was gonna be to close the school. Hello, Mr. Tripp?
Richard?
Before I No, I wanna answer your question.
She's answering your question, but you're not paying attention. She's
I'm not even gonna comment. Before I could make a decision on what to do with the million dollars that would be saved, I'd have to know what the cost would be to close the school. Because there are costs involved with closing a school and also in the plan to redistrict children. So there would be, I don't know that there would be additional transportation costs, but there could be because we would need to red buses to different places and out to schools further than they do now. So I think it's a hard question to answer without having all the pieces, which we do not have. I would like to see full-day kindergarten. That would be a nice thing. So if we had extra money left over, I would like to add kindergarten. And I do think that considering the taxpayers have asked us to close the school, if that's what we come down to, some of that needs to be returned as well.
Okay, yeah, so similar to last year when we had an unexpected surplus, we think we had an open and inclusive discussion amongst the board, public comment and with the town council. And I think that's the way we would move forward with any additional funds that we saw from a school closing. Thank you.
I, I guess first of all, I will believe that there is 1.2 million to 1.5 million dollars left over when I see it. I'm skeptical about the fact that there may be money left over from closing the school. But for me, closing a school is, is more about efficiency. But if there were money left over and I'd like to see the, you know, the, the amount there, I would split that up between the taxpayers and, and put it toward infrastructures in the school.
I think that at the end of the day, we're all gonna have a very similar answer to this question in that, no, don't expect
in that no, don't expect a million dollars to go back to the taxpayers. It's not a reasonable expectation. We need to reinvest in our children. Is there the future of this country? We need our curriculum to be current. We need to be setting children up to succeed. There needs to be a balance. There needs to be a split as to what we're doing with any additional funds that are left over. I don't think that you can say that they're going to go to any particular place and I don't think it's appropriate to say that we're going to save any particular amount of money. I think that the world we live in right now, particularly in the United States of America, we're seeing a reduction in births in general, less people are having children. So the idea about closing a school, that's a reality. I think that that's going to happen. There's really not a question. If you look at over the last 10 years, we've lost 1,200 to 1,300 students out of the school district. There are homes that are for sale, but who's to say that the people that are moving in have children or even plan on having children? And I think that that's what you're going to run into more. Millennials aren't having the same volume of kids. You don't talk to people these days who have four, five, six, seven children like they used to. I was reading an article today that was shared out through the Economic Development Committee in regards to just a reduction in how millennials are waiting later in life to do so. And most first-time moms are between the ages of 30 and 35 now. You're not having kids in the late teens and early twenties anymore. The family dynamics changed. So what we need to provide as a school district is going to change. So what we see as enrollment goals and what we see in overall buildings and how many schools we need, all that's going to change. And to Tom's point, we need a five-to-10-year plan. We need to update the strategic plan. We need to have a goal. Thanks.
Okay, Jim Morgan, you're up next.
Good evening. I appreciate, I think it's important that lots of choices. Thank you, Mark. That's much better. So hypothetically, you're in a hypothetical situation right now. It's 2022. You have 1,900 kids in the school district. In 2019, the school board voted, well, what was it, 5-1-1? To close a school if enrollments reached 1925 or 1947. So you're now at 1,900 in 2022. I want your answer. The motion's been made. It's been seconded to close Grinnell or close a school. I'll make it simple. Close a school. What's your vote? Yes, no, or abstain?
So if I may, can you allow me the two minutes to answer this question? But then let me have my two minutes to close because I have been notified to head back over to town hall, if that's all right with you.
I assume that's okay, Richard. Okay.
To answer that question.
Okay, it's your show.
My vote would be to go ahead and close the school. I understand with some caveats, but you know, if you watched our board meeting last week, we also know that there were some conditions that could be nullified or modified. I think one thing to point out is that if you ended up with 50 children that were autistic in the district, that changes the dynamic of that number. So it's that reservation. But the number certainly supports that. Certainly if you have, all those kids are in regular education with no stipulations, it's an easy thing to go ahead and vote on, in my view. So I think understanding what Dan's formula was gave some reservations there that the board will have yet to take a look at down the road. Some of it was stipulated about full-day kindergarten. And the question's going to be on that is, do we have the resources for it at that time? Has the legislature granted us resources for full-day kindergarten and who's going to vote for that? And if the board were to say, no, we don't support full-day kindergarten, that makes it even easier. So to that, that's my answer to that question. In closing, let me just say this. You know, I opened up by expressing my appreciation for everybody that's stepped up here. I understand what's at stake. I have known what's at stake for some time. I've respected, and again, if you see the chairman's overview in my, in the annual budget, you'll see that I express this, the rights of all of our citizens to have concerns about where our costs are going. It doesn't matter to me necessarily who sits here, as long as that person has my viewpoint and shares where I'd like to see us go. And and because I can share. I really can. And that is that we want a better return on the dollar for what we're getting out of our education. But we also understand what the concerns are about the costs and the values going forward. You know, there were some questions asked earlier and in the two minutes, you know, you're just not thinking as clearly. If somebody said, hey, how about a cup of coffee and a half hour conversation, I could be more insightful with some of the answers. But you know, there's just a lot, a lot to all of this. And I just want the best people that understand what they're going through or what they're going to be faced going forward to get us where we need to go. And that is increasing our proficiencies, our test scores, better achievement for our kids, but also leveling out that tax dollar and trying to find that happy balance. So again, I appreciate everybody that's come up here, your service to the community. I can tell you during the fall, I didn't ever hear that from most of the parents that were speaking to us. So with that, I do need to go and thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn. And just for those that are watching from home and those in the audience that may not know, Lynn is actually the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals and they're meeting us tonight too. So he's being called back to do some business. Have a good one.
So I think that's a really hard question to answer without having all the information that goes along with it. Yes, no, or abstain. I abstained from the vote last week. I abstained, I was not an abstention in the beginning. And when the discussion started with our board, I became an abstention because I realized I didn't have enough information. I also realized our superintendent did not have the information that we had prior to our board meeting. So while I totally agree that we need to have a number that is feasible and makes sense to close a building or repurpose a building, I think that it can't be made just by the board. I think it needs to, the information needs to come from the administration, what their needs are, what they see our needs are, what specialized programs like Lynn mentioned that we may need. We'll learn that from the survey that's being, or special I'm losing, I lost my track. It's a special ed study, which I asked for because I think we need to know what the trends of special education are. They're always changing and we're always trying to meet those needs. If we have an idea of what the trends are going to be and what we're going to need, then we can plan ahead. If that spaces in schools that we need to use and repurpose them, that's fabulous. If we don't have the space that we need and it needs to be something different, that's fabulous too. But I can't give you a yes, no, or abstain without having more information, except for just a number.
Okay, Chairman Morgan, my vote would be yes. So now that we're at 2022, I'm going to reverse this back to 2019 and go through that a little bit. We need to start pre-planning now. We discussed that briefly at the last meeting where we made that vote. Before I went to Northeastern, I was at a small community college in New York State and I was a volunteer fireman. And we used to go around town and looking at complex buildings and pre-plan what would happen if one of them caught on fire. We would know where to enter the building depending on where the fire was, how to vent the building, where to space apparatus, who to call for help. And although this isn't going to be a burning building, it's a closing building. So we're going to need to know transportation. We're going to need to know where the kids are going to go between now and then. We're seeing an influx in Barker or maybe an influx at East Derry. We need to know where the influx is at so we can proportion students correctly. So between now and then, we have some legwork to do. We need to get the pre-plan going.
Stop my clock now. Thank you. I just, I find it incredible that after four years, that there's not enough information to be able to make a vote on whether or not to close a school. I was pretty upset about Brenda abstaining on the vote because you know, you got to make a stand one way or the other. If you don't want to close it, then say no. But to say that there's not enough information, I don't know how many, what'd they do, three studies? Two or three studies that you guys did, two or three studies on it. And you know, you've got to stand up and make a decision on that. And if it's no, then that's fine. But you know, to put it in perspective, you know, you've lost almost 700 kids in two years. That's the population of Grinnell and South Rades combined. I think the school board's come up with a pretty good plan. I mean, the tentative one that they talked about, which would be to close the SAU, move the offices down to Grinnell. And I would hope that the school board will work with the town council on also being able to utilize that space for something else too. So you know, and the time to start the plan is right now, at the next meeting. Start putting the plan together, start getting things going because it's going to take a while. You know, you just don't, you just don't go in at the end of the year, close up the school and say, okay, you're going here, you're going here, you're going here. It's going to take planning, it's going to take some money. But you know what? You've got to start to move forward on closing the school. Thank you.
Tom, the question was just whether you want to, yes or no?
Yes or no, close the school? Oh, yeah, absolutely, close the school.
That's okay. So Counselor Morgan, I would say that based on, my answer to the prior question is yes, we would have to close the school at that point. And I think that to Tom's point, coming up and working on a plan to do so needs to happen with the three people who are sitting at this board today that are going to be voted on in this election. We have to be smart about it. We have to be strategic. We have to take in all available information and figure out what makes the most sense. And I think that we have a lot of that. You know, we've done a lot of research. We've had a lot of studies. But I think that it's up to the next board to take that information and work with it and come up with a plan. But my vote's yes. If the board now says we're going to close the school when we reach this sort of number and then we reach that number, that's your job as a board to follow up with the prior board's suggestion of closing a school. Thanks.
Do your job. He's right. You were right last night. I worry that we're not thinking about that enough and that the, these studies that we've spent an inordinate amount of time on, and congratulations to the Facilities Committee and all the committees who worked on these. I've read them. They are fantastic. And they really direct you as to what the options are. I've even thought of some other options that we could do, but I, we have the data. And if we get to that point and it's 2022 and we reach that, we go below 1925, which was the number that they came up with and voted on and agreed to, then my vote is to close a school. I don't see that as being a bad thing necessarily. I think that you will consolidate and I think there's improvement in consolidation. You can improve things in consolidation. I think that it will be difficult. I'm not saying it's not. But honestly, I, when I went, I've spoken about this at a couple of meetings. And that was the reference to my talking at one of the meetings and saying that we don't, at least I have not seen a 10-year plan. You know, in business, if you don't have a business plan as to what you're going to be doing in the future and not just like two years from now or three years from now, but like 10 years from now, 20 years from now. I don't know why we didn't have this vote a decade ago. Why didn't the school boards in the past think about these things and, you know, think about the reducing of populations of children? Now, the fact that I think that we should close a school if we get near that number doesn't mean that there aren't alternatives in case of contingencies and the population starts to rise again. There are alternatives and in terms of like, you know, we could close a school and then reallocate and work on, you know, making sure that children get, you know, the quality education that they deserve. But my vote is definitely for closing a school if necessary.
Okay, I think Catherine, you have the next question?
Hi, I'm Catherine Prudhomme O'Brien. I am a state rep.
Hold that up a little closer.
Oh, hi. I'm a state representative in Derry. When I was in third grade, my school closed and I was okay. Also, it's just the reality of demographics when I was, years ago, we had 11 state representatives in Derry. Now we have 10 because of the demographics. My question to you is about if a school did close, would you support that school building becoming, say, a charter school? Maybe a K through eight, a school that did not use Common Core? Because I know every day I hear parents complaining about Common Core and that's something that they, if they had the option, would like to send their child to a school that does not use Common Core. Is that something you would support? And if not, why?
I think if we close the school, we have to look at all the options and what we're going to, what the best bang for the buck will be to get, to sell the building, repurpose it, or whatever the case is. So I mean, I would be open to any option that is available, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think, I think once that school closes, like there's going to be ideas as to how we use it. I know there was a movement at the state level that was going to force districts to offer that as a first option. I don't really like that idea. But if we have, I don't, I like the idea of having another charter school, the next charter school. I'm actually the delegate from our board onto their board. I'm a voting member. And I see the amazing improvements that children have. We've had parents come to our meetings and talk about their students. From the student in eighth grade that never wanted to go to school, fought with the parents to do homework, was miserable all the time. And at that next, each student has something like an IEP. They don't all have IEPs, but the school runs it that way as if every student had one. And at some point, the students will take charge and say, no, I want to run my meeting. They go to school without arguing. They love their school. They participate. Students that would never talk in class are suddenly opening up and blossoming. So I would definitely support that idea in our district. Whether it's in that building, I think is a discussion that the entire town needs to have.
Yes, I am in favor of doing that. Of course, I'd like to see the details and the plans. But you know, mainstream education isn't for all students. I've seen that where I've been as a teacher. And you know, sometimes students just thrive better in a charter school where it's a, you know, a smaller classroom and it's, you know, less confusing. I can see students going to Pinkerton Academy and just being overwhelmed with, you know, being, you know, 3,000 students there and, you know, the huge campus. So yes, I'm fine with your idea and I like it. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Catherine, for your question. I think that everybody's had a good answer here in that we can repurpose that building in a variety of different ways. And it's, I think that having another charter school is not a negative. I think that's a positive thing. With that being said, I think the ideal situation, if you were to look at the overall economics of our community and what's needed, is if we were to close a building and it was Grinnell, looking at repurposing that building for higher education and finding a college like a Southern New Hampshire University or UNH that's looking for an additional satellite campus and bringing that to Derry because that's going to drive that consumer here who's like in school and is going to be going to our local businesses and supporting our economy in that way. So I think there's a couple of different things that we can do at the school and I'm not opposed to realistically looking at all available options and doing something.
I absolutely agree with that. I think that the, there's been a number of people who've been talking about, you know, getting people in to talk about opening up satellite campuses for colleges. And I think that would be a great idea, bringing young people to town and improving our economy and there's lots of benefits for that. I'm not against at all opening up a charter school or looking into that. I would look, I would want to see data on, you know, how many kids would be interested in that sort of thing? I think we could do some research on that. I think there's also a myriad of things we could do with that building that we could I think there's also a myriad of things we could do with that building, that we could, we could, you know, move the SAU into that building, we could, you know, have our, have full-day kindergarten in that building, for instance. We could repurpose it for other purposes. But I, I'm definitely open to all possibilities. I think that the, the next school is doing a great job at, you know, taking some kids who ordinarily would have a difficult time in Pinkerton, and, and, and are thriving in the next, and I think it's a great thing. And so I'm definitely, would be open to looking at that, yeah.
Hey, great. I don't know, did John Poticek leave his question with anybody, or are we? Okay. So then Mark, Mark Grabowski, you're up next.
Hi, Mark Grabowski. Mark Grabowski, I guess I just wanted to offer a little perspective. Mark Grabowski, I just wanted to take the same opportunity as a couple of others, who offered some perspective, or a, a viewpoint, or opinion.
Gotta really hold it right up. Rock star.
One gentleman here had a bad experience in the school district, another lady seemed to have a, a good or great experience in the school district. I wanted to offer, and maybe complete the spectrum of, of thought there, is overall, I've had what I described as an average experience in the school district. My two boys are now a senior and a sophomore, so I, I think I've seen, I, I have the vantage of virtually the entire Derry Carpet of School District now. We've had some great experiences, we've had some disappointing and some bad experiences. Overall, I'd say average. Unfortunately, that means we're like many other surrounding towns. And, and that goes to prospective homeowners, prospective parents looking at moving to town, and so on and so forth. I think the folks are looking for value, is, is, you know, how, how I feel about it. They'll pay for great, and they don't want to pay for poor. My question really is related to that. How would you guys measure a successful school district? And, and, in, in the context of, I've heard and know some others up there, up here today, about testing. Some people, there's a whole spectrum of thought on testing. We shouldn't test at all. That's really, that's really a thought out there in the education industry. On the other end of the spectrum is, that's the only way we measure success in a school district. So, how would you measure, and, and, and I'd like to emphasize the word "measure," it's specific measurables. How would you measure the success of a school district?
I think we're back down to Derek on this one, right?
Okay. So I think a school district would be successful if you produce well-rounded, thoughtful, kind human beings that will leave 12th grade and either go into college and, and onto their careers, or go into the workforce, and, and, and start their working careers. How do you measure that? I don't think anybody's got that answer. It's certainly not a test score. An SAT isn't gonna tell you if someone's gonna be a Fortune 500 CEO. A test score's not gonna tell you if the person's gonna be nice to other people, if they're gonna be, if they're gonna be a, a, a great addition to a company. So I think there's lots of different variables. But yeah, so, the optics right now are on test scores, so I think we're gonna be looking at those. Like I said before, we have a three-year goal for 10% improvement in the New Hampshire statewide assessment. We also use the NWA exam, and, and last fall, in our September school board meeting, we had a presentation on, on our 2017 to 2018 results. In our K to five, where we implemented a new math program, we had an increase in growth in all of our K to five cohorts, and it was an increased growth that was above typical for all of those grades. And now that's, we're about three years into new math program, so it's gonna take a little while for that to kind of get through the entire district, but we're seeing those results now. If you want value, then I think we need to have full-day K. Other districts around us have it. People are gonna look for that. People are coming from out of state. Many states, it's automatic, they've had it for eons. Our state doesn't have it, in all levels, we're one of the last few remaining districts doesn't have full-day K. So if we want to have value, then full-day K is gonna be one of those things that people look at. People come in and they're shocked that their kid's gonna start kindergarten, and they have to pay for it. I imagine that word gets around, and people say, oh, I can go over this district and, and not have to pay. So, that's my attempt at an answer, anyway. Thank you.
I'm, I'm probably not gonna be as good as you as attempting to, to test, to answer that question, because that's, that's a tough one. Yeah, how do you measure it? And yes, the focus right now is on, is on testing, and testing is not the end-all answer to what's going on in our schools. I think that there's gonna be, you know, there's always gonna be a certain amount of students that are, that don't do well on tests, and, you know, a lot of them that do well. But I mean, certainly, we need to definitely improve our test scores in, in Derry. And again, that's not necessarily a, a measure of it, but, you know, I can, I can only talk about my experience of, in, in teaching, and some of the things that I did, and we were, in, in my particular program, we were very, very important that, that we taught students respect, and to be respectful to everybody. And I think that's really important. We also taught them working skills, how to get along with people, how to work, and I think, I think those are, are measures, but, you know, I, you've, you've got me stuck on that, Mark, and I think it's a great answer. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mark. I think that how do you measure success of a school district is a, is a loaded question, because to everyone, there's different measurables. To your point, some people look at tests, some people can look at graduation rate, some people can look at what the children are doing when they leave school. Does a good job of, it was in the budget book that we got at the deliberative session, it really telling us where, where the Derry graduates are going after, after school, right? Like, so where they're going, if they're going to four-year school, what they're majoring in and whatnot. And I think looking for kids, or sorry, measuring success is, is looking to see what those children are doing after they've left our school district, and where, where they're going to school, what they're going to major in, what they plan on doing with their life. I think that when you look through the K through eight, and then you see the transition of Pinkerton, what's, what's that placement like? Is it, are they in standard classes, or are they in AP classes? Are they, are your elementary students taking pace courses? You know, it's, if you have a need for more pace courses, K through eight, you're doing a good job. If you have a need for more AP at Pinkerton, you're doing a good job. And I think that people are gonna look at, at Derry as, a lot of people just moved here for, for Pinkerton Academy, not realizing that there are now five other communities that send their kids there, and we need to set ourselves apart from those other communities. Because I can home, I can own a home for more money, pay lower taxes in Hampstead, and my kids still go to Pinkerton Academy, right? So like, that's where we're at. So our K through eight education needs to get better, but how we measure that, I don't think you can really determine that outside of test scores, and again, placement as kids kind of grow through the school system.
Come on. No, not really. Yeah, there's no good answer to that question. Testing has to be the basis, I think, of, of how you measure a school, how well, well-rounded in general. It's gonna be an average across the school, it's gonna be an average for the different grades, it's gonna be an average for, for, you know, how well your children are, are absorbing knowledge, but also looking at the ability of those students, especially K through eight, to transition seamlessly into high school, and then how they transition seamlessly out of high school and into the workforce, or into college. And I, I think that those, those statistics I've seen also at Pinkerton, because I've got two girls going there right now, those statistics are great. I think that tracking that information is really important. I'm a, I'm a kind of a data guy. I know data, this is what I do for a living in my company, but the, the important thing about it is not just the data, though, is also to talk to the kids, to talk to the teacher, teachers, and to see where those kids are, are excelling, and target those areas, whether or not. I, I think that that's, you know, the goal of all the schools, really, is to, to improve the overall educational experience of all the kids. But I, I think this one area you can target is, is, again, it's communication, it's talking to, the, the, getting the parents talking to the teachers, and getting the teachers talking to the administration, and making sure that everybody's on the same page to boost the, the, the test scores, but also boost the, kind of the life, you know, abilities of those children. Making sure that they're able to go either to college, or to the workforce directly, with the skills that they need to handle those situations, and I think that that's a really good part, place to target.
I'm gonna agree with Derek. I think our goal is to turn out well-rounded, well-educated children. I, test scores are just one measure, one, one little, little measure in a student's career as a student for 12 years. I think we need to put a lot back onto our teachers. A test score doesn't show the child who comes to school without breakfast, or came to school knowing that their mom had chemo treatments yesterday, and is hard to focus and didn't sleep well last night, or maybe their goldfish died. The teacher knows that, but a computer and a standardized test doesn't know that. They don't know that that's why the child didn't do well. The other thing is, you can't study for them. You don't know what's gonna be on them. When you go out into the world and you decide to be a physical therapist, or a plumber, or a hairdresser, there are standards that you have to meet, and tests that you take to get a license to do those things. But you know what you're being tested on, so you can study and know what, what you need to do. However, I think the standardized tests are a good measure for districts, because you can look at the data and really hone down into saying, this group of students is missing this one element of math, or this one group of students is missing this one group, or one element of writing. We can improve that by looking at that data. I don't really know what the measure is. I guess my measure would be, are students going onto Pinkerton, the collaborative effort that our administrators and our teachers have with working with Pinkerton, and looking at our curriculum and how they align? I think that's a huge bonus for us. Also, when they graduate, what are they doing? So that's, that's what I get.
Great. So we're, we're getting late on time. If you are at home and you want to send a question, you can do that, but we may not have a lot of time for it. We have a couple more here in the room, so Neil, you're up next.
Neil Weatherby, 18-year resident of Derry, and nobody's ever had trouble hearing me before, I hope that trend continues. First, I want to thank everybody up there, you know, the sitting board members, the new candidates. It's been a while since we've had, you know, contested elections on the school board, usually one, maybe two, a lot of times uncontested. I think that's a good thing, you know, for the sitting candidates, you know, I know firsthand, being a public official is not always fun, not always easy. There's no magic wands they give you when you get elected. All that, all that being said, elections, in my view, are a job review. So I looked at numbers from three years ago, and I looked at numbers for today, this year. Three years ago, the budget was $81.7 million. This year, it's 86.8. Three years ago, we had 5,246 students. This year, we have 5,036. Three years ago, we had 597.5 staff members. This year, we have 596.5. So, that's $5.1 million more with 210 less students and one less staff. My question is, does anybody think that that's an acceptable trajectory for our community and our education system? If not, for the sitting candidates, what will you do that clearly hasn't happened in the last three years? And for the new candidates, what, what areas will you start to look at to, to try and change that trajectory? Trying to remember who went last, last time, sorry. Tom, you're up.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty interesting, Neil. I mean, I've been following those numbers for, for quite a long time, and I've, I've always been a, kind of a critic of that, and, you know, it's, it's the numbers, if the numbers go down, I mean, you would expect that the budget goes down, but it, it doesn't, and it goes up year after year after year. And, you know, again, that was why I brought up my idea of a 10-year plan, so it goes up gradually, but, you know, if, if a member, if, if I was a member of the school board, I'd, I'd be keeping my eye on that, I mean, and not voting on, on the increase. I mean, the, the budget this year is, is going up by 1.4 million, not the 200,000 that everybody said, because if you look at the, you know, if you look at the warrant articles, as I said before, the, the contracts are negotiated, it'd be an extra $800,000, and $400,000 left over from the previous year, so I think that's a, that's a pretty steep increase, and you really got to keep an eye on the, on the bottom line. And, and, you know, the school board hasn't done that. I mean, you're, you're right with those figures. And, you know, the only thing I can say is that, you know, when you, when you go to the school district meeting, there's a large majority of people there that vote for the, that vote for the present budget. So I mean, I don't know how many people are there, less, probably around 200 people at the school district meeting, figure 200 people are making a decision on an $86 million budget? You know, we need to, we need to get more people that are, to show up to the, the school district meetings and, you know, work on that, but, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing to do. I mean, you're right, you're right, the budget is, has been, has been high for years and years.
To your point, Neil, if you look at the school budget, it's $86 million, or $87 million. The town is $47 million. And what always happens is the town goes up incrementally, everybody is there yelling, ripping people apart over cents on the tax rate. Yet, over here on the school side, there's not that same level of public interaction. There has been recently. We see a lot more people at the meetings. But we've always held the school board, I think, to a different standard than we've held the town council. And I think that it's time for we, as a public, to hold our board's feet to the fire. You know, we need to know where our money's being spent, how it's being spent, and what's going on. A couple years ago, there was the large increase in regards to benefits, and getting caught up. We've obviously had a decrease in state funding coming back, so there's a lot more onus put on the taxpayer. But going up $6 million or $5 million over the course of the last many years isn't very responsible. I think that there's a lot of things that play into that number, but really having the public hold us to, you know, like I said, hold our feet to the fire, but really challenge us to do our job and what they're electing us for, is the only way that things are realistically gonna change. There's a lot of conversations that need to be had in regards to union contracts. There's a lot of conversations that need to be had in regards to incentivizing early retirement for some of our teachers, so that the, so that the folks that are making more money are the folks that are leaving and coming out of the system, so that we can bring in new, younger teachers with a different mindset, and that are more, they can more easily relate to our children. Tenure's a great thing in a lot of industry, and it's great in teaching, there's always that one teacher that you know in the school that's been there forever, that's done a great job for your kids. Want to get better? We need to incentivize people to, to retire early, we need to bring in youth that cost less money, and bring down our budget.
Thank you for the question, Neil. That was one of the big reasons why I decided to run, run last year and running this year again. It, it, I, I know that there are a lot of reasons as to why the budget is, keeps going up, and, and part of that reason is, is a legitimate reason that, that the state is just reducing our funding. That's a significant area that we need to target. We are doing some of that. I think that part of the problem, and what, again, one of the reasons why I ran was because of the contentiousness of, of the, the relationship between the school board and the town council. And I understand that, that, that not everybody agrees with this, but this was my perception of this. When this first started, when this relationship first started, it was kicking and screaming going into this. And I don't get that. And I don't get that. Everybody's egos should be put over there, and they should be thinking about the town and all working together to bring costs down, to bring money back to the town, to focus on, on talking to all of our state reps and getting them involved and loving our town so much that you couldn't possibly give away any money to any other town. I think that it is important to develop those relationships within our three different communities, in terms of the town council, the school board, and the state reps, to focus on getting that money back to Derry to, to be able to bring these costs down. That's the first and foremost way of doing that. And, you know, obviously targeting the, the actual school budget itself, but I mean, you know, if, if we're doing a good job on that, then that's what we need to be doing, is, is getting our money back to, to Derry.
That's another hard question. Um, our budget is developed by a citizen, fiscal advisory committee of nine members, along with the school board and our administration. This year, our budget includes a 5.9% increase from Pinkerton Academy in regular education and a 10% increase in special education, which was a big, unexpected and a, a large hit to us, as well as the other sending towns. I think we've tried to reduce staff as we could. Um, I'm gonna go back and look at your numbers tomorrow, though. I think we do the best we can, to be honest. Um, we, the biggest pie, piece of the pie in our budget is Pinkerton Academy and salaries. The rest of the pie is a tiny piece. We came down to pennies to keep our budget at 2.99% um, this year. Literally came down to pennies. There were a lot of discussions about what we could cut. Um, sports came up, and we said no. We didn't wanna cut those extracurricular activities from students. Um, I think most of us said no. Um, so I just, I think we, we do the best we can with what we have, but the uncontrollables are, are difficult, we can't manage them. There's, there's no way to manage, unless we, we, I guess we, we could manage it, we could lay off staff and increase class size, but that's really not the best thing to do for our students, so, but I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna look at the staff numbers tomorrow.
Derek?
Okay, so 5 million over three years, that's 6%, which is about 2% a year. 2% isn't bad. Sure, there's room. It's, it's less than inflation typically is considered, it's less than the social security COLA this year. Can we do better? Sure. Um, as Brenda mentioned, the biggest part of our budget is labor. Uh, we're in a service industry, and it's very difficult to replace labor with technology. You can go to, I'm a pharmacist, so I'll use that. You can go to CVS and you see their machine that counts out all the pills. That reduces about 40 hours of labor from their budget overnight by installing that machine. We can't do that. We have people that teach, and that's really what we want to continue with. Um, so, yeah, 2% a year, I mean, union negotiations, some year it's up, some year it's down, but 2% overall isn't, isn't horrible. Um, we can do better, but I think every year, yeah, we, we're down, we, we get to the point where we cut a lot, and, and to the point where the next decision is, do we want to go to 30 kids in fifth grade and 25 kids in third grade? And I think, um, number one, we'd start to lose our talent, we'd start to lose our teachers. They'd come here for a year or two to get experience, and they'd leave and go somewhere else. So we'd have constant turnover. So, is it acceptable? I think, in looking at my budget, a 2% increase in expenditures a year is acceptable.
Okay, so, um, we are running really, uh, up to the minute here. I know we have, I think, we had two more questions. Uh, I'm gonna, if the candidates are okay running a little bit over, if you guys are okay to handle those two, and then we'll cut it off. I hate to leave somebody hanging with a question. Is that acceptable to everybody? All right. So Tina, you're up next, and then we have one more question, then we'll wrap it up.
Tina Guilford, Derry resident. Um, I think, as you're aware, there's a lot of apathy in this town. Voters don't show up in March. 200 people delivered a session. And parents, a lot of times, don't feel involved. So, full disclosure, my daughter's a senior at Pinkerton, she's the only kid I have. Most of my friends have kids in the high school, they have kids in the younger schools as well. Now, when I was a child, I'd come home sometimes with a math problem I didn't understand. My parents were immigrants, I'm an immigrant, and they would be able to help me. What I noticed, starting in middle school, is my daughter would come home with schoolwork. And she had a method of doing it that I had never seen before, and I had no idea what she was doing. I'm a proactive parent. I sent emails, parent, you know, teachers sent me videos, I went online to YouTube. But many parents are not. So, how are you going to get parents involved? 'Cause a lot of people say today that some of the problems that we have with our kids is 'cause parents aren't doing their part, they're working multiple jobs. How are you gonna help parents help their kids? And, you know, you guys talk about special ed kids and what have you. I'm talking about the regular kid, who's, you know, can fall through the cracks, just like all the other ones.
So Tina, I, I think how our parents are gonna help the kids is just where we're running late, so let's go ahead and start with Nick.
Thanks for throwing that out there. So I think that, Tom brought it up earlier, you know, parents need to be advocates for their children, and you emailing and doing all the things that you're doing, that's exactly what we need people to do. I understand that the curriculum now looks a lot different than it was when we were all in school. Um, my children, my, my youngest, well, not my youngest, my oldest now, you know, he's in seventh grade, he does math that I can't do, um, 'cause he's ridiculously intelligent. But even over the last couple years, I, I've looked at things and I've had to relearn how I knew math. And I think that what we're really teaching our, our children is how to solve problems at a core level, and not just through, when we went to school, everything was, everything was realistically just remembering and memorization and like, 2 times 2 is 4, that's just what it is. Not like, how you got that number, it's just, it is what it is. And I think that that's what we're trying to teach our kids, i- is to, is to challenge everything, but like, figure out why something exists. Because if you can understand it at a basic level, the more complex things get, the easier it is for understand. But that's a challenge for us as parents, because that's not how we were brought up, it's not what we did. So all that we can really do is email the teachers, go online, use YouTube, you know, like, find all these things, but I don't think that, like, apathy isn't necessarily a negative thing. I think we brought it up last night, sometimes when you're, when you're happy with a situation or you're just kinda good with the way things go, you tend to, to stay home or not be as involved, because you don't feel you have to, because everything tends to be going right. But I also think that there's some parents that are afraid, that like, they don't know and that their kid's failing or their kid's struggling, because they just, they don't know how to do it themselves. So I ask that everybody just reach out to the teachers, send emails, ask for follow-up, and if you have to, use additional resources sometimes.
Thank you for the question, Tina. I think that, um, I think I just figured it out, just like last week. I'm not kidding. I was looking at the, the math, and, and I, I knew probably this question would come up at some point, um, the new math. And, um, uh, uh, Nick is dead on on, on what the reasoning was behind it. I did a little bit of research on it, and, um, and I understand now better about why it's there. It is part of the standards that the state has given, uh, to, to schools to, to help bring, you know, the math scores up in general. It is an applied mathematics kind of idea. So you, you know, we would learn in school, you would, you would take, you know, uh, 3.5 times 0.2, and then we'd do all the math on it, and we'd come up with the answer. But in reality, when kids get out of school, they can do it that way, and they can also figure it out in their heads, because 3.5 is like 350, and .2 is 20%. So everybody's doing math. 20% of your bill is your tip. Everybody does this math, but they do it in a very different way. Nobody writes out the math longhand when they're doing tips. They just kind of, they say, "Well, you know, 10% is this," and then, you know, double it, and they, they see your answer. It's, it's about developing applied mathematics and, and allowing kids to do a better job in, in life when they get out of school. I understand the concept behind it. Um, I, I hope that it's helping kids learn, and I think it is incumbent upon us, unfortunately, to go out and do some research and figure it out ourselves, unfortunately. Um, I, I think that, that, you know, it, it is a scary thing for us, uh, as adults, to kind of try to learn something new. Um, and it, it's, you know, it's something that I think eventually will help our kids. I'd like to see, see some studies on that and how well it's, it's doing, and I'd be perfectly willing to open up the curriculum and talk about it more.
So I can't speak for Pinkerton, but I know that our elementary and middle schools have had nights for parents to come in and actually work with the math curriculum, if that's...
(inaudible)
Oh. Um, and that was part of the new math curriculum that we purchased, which is a great idea, because I was getting emails from parents with pictures of their children's homework. What, what is the answer to this? They don't know. Um, so I, I think that was really helpful. Some of them were a little heated, but once people understood the curriculum and why it was changed, um, it became, they became much more popular and much more, um, family-oriented as well. So schools have, um, math game nights. Um, I know Grinnell School, Grinnell PTA just won a $1,000 grant for a STEM night, um, which is fabulous. So each school tries to do those things, but the curriculum definitely was district-driven, not parent-driven. Parent involvement is really, really important. It tells your children that you're, you're involved in their school, but you should be welcomed as well. And again, that's really hard when they're in high school. Um, and I don't know, I know parents have tried to get different, um, opportunities for parents at Pinkerton. I'm not sure if it's the administration that really isn't interested, or if it's the kids that aren't really interested, but, um, I can say at our, at the elementary and middle school level, we do offer opportunities for parents to learn about the curriculum, and also in a fun way with, now with the math nights, and, um, also literacy nights.
Uh, yes, I was gonna mention the math nights and literacy nights as well. I know the, um, administration is working on a curriculum website. Um, Dr. Corian mentioned that at one of our last meetings, I'm not sure which one, they've all kind of blended together the past month and a half, um, but I think that's something that's gonna be a, a resource for those that have questions, that they'll have specific links or something like that to go to. So that'll be upcoming. Um, but you mentioned it, right? Apathy. Um, we see apathy in voting, we see apathy in coming to meetings like this, but we see apathy in parent involvement in general. Yourself not included, you're, you're doing a great job, but I think amongst our society we see that. Um, there was a recent article published that showed students excel in school if their parents are involved in their education. And I think a lot of, more nowadays, parents are relying more on the schools to do the educating, which is one of our jobs, but it's also the parents' part, to be there, and maybe they don't understand it, but just saying, "Hey, good job, let's try it this way, this is, you know, you're doing a great job, and I have no idea what you're doing, but it looks good," you know, just being there and, and sitting down with them and giving them some attention. Um, so yeah, hopefully we'll have a website soon that will help with that.
Thank you. I, I think the question was more, how do you get parents involved? Okay? Although I like Brenda's, uh, comment where parents would come and learn new math, and I applaud Nick and Matt for learning that, I'm glad I didn't have to do it. Um, I, I don't know. I honestly don't know. And that was one of the most frustrating things for me as a teacher, was that to have a student that was not doing well, and I'd tell him, "Tomorrow night is PTA, make sure your mother, make sure your father, make sure your guardian, make sure your parent comes in and talks to me, I wanna talk to him." And, um, you know, of course, they, they wouldn't, and I, we always had a, a few number of teacher, of parents that would show up, and it was, it was really hard. Um, one of the things that, that I used to do is I would email, if there was a problem with a kid, I would email him, uh, or pick up the phone and call him. And, uh, you know, it's pretty interesting, I'm just gonna finish with one quick story, I hope I don't get shut off. Um, I, I had a student that was, um, that was flunking, and, and adds of February, uh, this particular student would have completely lost the, her, her senior year and not graduated if she continued being absent. And so her, her parents came in, and I sat there and talked to them, and she was over the limit, and parents said, "Well, you know, what can you do?" And she said, "I want my, you know, I, I want my, uh, son or daughter," I'm not gonna say who she was, uh, "to, to graduate." And I said, "Okay, I'll tell you what, just have him, have him show up the rest of the quarter, have him show up the rest of the quarter, and I will pass him." And the person was way over the limit. I never saw him again. So, I don't know, I don't have the answer. Except for, except for teachers just, you know, teachers just getting involved with the, with the parents, um, by email or phone. Did you say something, Richard? I'm done.
Okay, so, uh, I believe that completed that cycle of the question, right? Okay? And, uh, I think we have one more question, and, uh...
Jessica Ring. So, I would like to know what your definition of 21st century learning is, and since we are two decades into the 21st century, how you think the Derry schools are at bringing that into the school system, and what you would do to bring us, bring more of the 21st century learning into the schools, to keep us competitive and relevant?
21st century learning. I haven't heard the term, so I will admit that, so I'm not gonna try to figure it out. Um, I know that, um, that learning and education in general has to move, it has to evolve, just like our children have to evolve, and, and, um, I, I think that the, the, that the math question actually was, it was a great example of that. That the, if something is not working, you need to develop new methods of teaching. And in this country in particular, um, we're not doing a great job right now, overall, I think, uh, in our educational system. Um, a lot of countries do a better job than us, there are countries out there that do no homework, uh, Sweden, I believe, was one. No homework, no homework, and, and the kids love it, but they're doing better in the school on standardized tests. Um, I think that there are a lot of different ways and a lot of different methodologies that can be used that we don't currently use, that we need to look at in terms of, of creating a new path for our children. Um, and this is not just for Derry, this is all, for all schools really across the country. Um, I think that our, our, our kids are suffering under a, a burden of not change, you know, lack of change in this school, in the, in the, in the curriculums, um, in the country in general. And I think that, that more flexibility in looking at, uh, curriculums, um, that other countries are doing and, and other, even other states and towns are doing, I think this is really important to look at, and I, I would be, uh, that, that would be my, one of my goals actually, is to look at curriculums and research that, so...
It is kind of a hard question. Um, I think that, um, we have moved, or we continually im- improve what we, the way we deliver curriculum to students. We've moved to smaller group instruction, which is helpful. We've, um, added many specialized programs which help children who would not have been helped previously. We are, we improved our infrastructure, so if you're in a school, you might actually be able to get Wi-Fi now on your phone. Um, we've, in the budget that we've proposed, we have, um, some one-to-one, we're gonna pilot that and see how it works. Pinkerton is also piloting it, and we're sharing information and data back and forth with that. Um, we did change the math curriculum and improve the way students think about math, so that, as, I'm not sure who said it before, it's not just rote memory, you're actually understanding why 1 and 1 is 2 in many different ways, so that that does transfer as you grow and go into the workforce. Um, I'm trying to think of other things. But it also includes the arts, art, music, PE, why it's important to be outside, getting fresh air and getting exercise, eating properly, all of those things that we've now, weren't even here maybe six years ago, they're, they're now being added into our schools. Um, everybody has a piece of it, the nurse is part of, a part of instruction, um, as well as the phys ed teacher is going into a classroom. So all of those pieces, I think, are bringing us... So all of those pieces, I think, are bringing us into a better place. And yes, I have a yellow card now.
Okay, so my definition of 21st century, I think we've begun that with our new approach. Our new curriculum is personalized education. The old days, it was the teacher teaching at the students, and now it's more of the teacher among the students. The students are reading to each other, which is really cool, because now they're getting that same level of feedback from the individual sitting right in front of them, rather than the teacher in front of the class, and maybe you're not paying attention in the back of the class and you never catch it. So I think that's kind of the basics of what I would say. Technology is a component of that. Administration is gonna be looking at how we want to implement technology throughout our district. They're working on that now and they'll have a plan for us in the foreseeable future, whether it's one-to-one throughout the district, or one-to-one in certain grades, or one-to-one at certain topics throughout the day. But there's a component that, that will help, that, you know, you can go on a virtual field trip, have a, have a quick lesson on social studies, and then go travel to Egypt and see the pyramids on your laptop. So that would be what I would foresee as 21st century.
I, I agree. I, I think one of the things that we need to do is continue to stay up with technology. I, I think one of the, the good things about technology is that, you know, the teachers and, and students can hook up on the internet and, and you can, you know, do your homework on the internet. You can, you know, there's classes that you can do on the internet. So certainly I think technology is the most important aspect of, of what we should be doing, because that's, that's where we're going. But in, here in Derry, I think the, the most important thing for 21st century is to improve the, the test scores. Test scores are terrible and they need to improve, so that's what I would like to see in Derry. Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Jess. I think that, that it's our job, or it's the educator's job to educate the children and get them ready for the real world and to get them ready for the workforce. And it is absolutely imperative that our students are learning the skills that they need to partake in jobs that exist today and ones that are ever-changing. There's a variety of different industries that exist now that never existed before. There's growth in industries that are, that exist now that never existed before. The needs of our economy has changed. The needs of our planet has changed. And I think that our, our children need to be educated in the real world and all the things that they're gonna be leaving school for. And I think that when you're looking at how, how much technology is a part of our lives, there's not a single person in this room who can live without their phone. Right? It just, you need that. It's imperative that you have it, because it connects us to the world, it connects us to each other. And we, our students need to have access to that same type of technology to learn from. And I think that moving towards a, a, you know, instructor-led online curriculum could even work in some instances, to have more, you know, online learnings and group projects that are all online. We need to do a lot of things that are just focused on how we live our lives every day, which is, again, with technology in our hands 24/7, and we ask the kids to, to learn a completely different way in school. 21st century learning is adapting to the challenges and changes of the economy and the challenges and changes of the workforce and the challenges and changes of the world. So that's what we need to do, is prepare our students for the jobs that exist now and in the future, and those needs are ever-changing.
Okay, great. Well, I wanna thank everybody for coming, and Richard's just gonna close up with some closing statements. For those who may have asked a question online, I'm sorry we didn't get to it. I would encourage you to participate, since we ended the last question on technology. We do have some great technology now, that you can interact with these candidates over the next two weeks online. I encourage you to do that. Email them. I know all of these sitting school board members have an email address that you can email them. The new candidates, I know most of them are participating on some of the social media sites as well, so there's ways to get involved and ask those questions, and I encourage everybody to have further conversations with every candidate here and come out on March 12th.
Well, I want to thank everyone that came tonight, especially the candidates. The candidates responded well to the questions from the audience, you know? I, I learned a lot tonight. I hope that people are a little bit more informed about what the candidates are interested in doing. I also want to thank, am I on a three-minute time too? Two. All right. I, I want to thank Taylor Library for coming and being our timekeeper, you know? I want to thank the moderator. I want to thank, well, Ernie's gone. I want to thank especially Dairy Cable TV for recording this and hopefully to be on the channel here shortly. And I want to say is, see you next year. Thank you.
You start.
All right, Tom, start. One minute, okay. One of the first things that, one of the things I was gonna talk about was the Net Zero Committee. I would hope that there's a, a seat vacant on the Net Zero Committee for this, for the school board. I would like to see the school board get involved with Net Zero and get involved in some renewable energy projects. We've been doing that with the town, it's really important. I think, I'm just gonna go here quickly, you know, start the process of closing a school now, start working on a 10-year plan now, definitely improve the relationship between the schools and Pinkerton. And that's a two-way street. That's just not, you know, the schools having to work with them. They gotta work with us too. And certainly, the very last thing is, is improving the test scores. Very quickly, Level 1 and 2 in Derry, which are not proficient, 52% in ELA, 59% in math, 64% in science, and those are all not proficient. Those are totally unacceptable figures. Thank you. And good night, and thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you again, everyone that came out tonight. I was here last night for the town council forum and we had a comparable amount of people here, and we had 20 or 30 people watching online. So again, I say thank you to everybody who's online, everybody who was here in the room today, and Mark for moderating, helping us out with that. And thank you very much, Richard and Ernie, for allowing us to partake here, tonight, here at the VFW. With that being said, my name's Nick Dalotwa, and I'm running for school board because I care about this town. I am uber passionate about Derry as a whole. And if you've known me at all, over the course of the last many years that I've been here, you'll see that. You'll see that I'm in the community, I'm an active member of the community, I'm here all the time. And I want to put in all the work that I've done for the chamber, for the Economic Development Committee, and put that into the schools. Because I'm here for the next 18 years, whether you like it or not, so this is not the last that you see of me. Thanks.
Again, thank you to the VFW and, and everybody who helped throw this great party. My name is Matt Levitt. I'm, I'm, I think we can do better. I think we can do better in our test scores. I think we can do better working with the community. I think we can do better job communicating. The schools can do a better job communicating, and the school board can do a better job communicating in general. I think that we could do a better job with collaboration with the town council, with the state reps to help bring money back to Derry. I think all of these things we can do better. I think that we could do a better job getting out there and talking to the public and getting onto social media. I'm on social media, Matt Levitt, Derry, on Facebook. So feel free to contact me and ask me questions. I want your questions. I want to know what you, what your concerns are, and I'm really interested in, to hear what you have to say. And please ask me anything. You can even yell at me. It's okay. It's Facebook. All right, thank you.
Thank you again to everyone involved in hosting this forum. My experience on the school board gives me the opportunity to continue the ongoing work of our district. I think we're doing a good job. We can always do better. I genuinely care about our students, our schools and our community. I'm extremely proud of the work that, of the work and the many accomplishments of our district, yet there is much work still left to be done. One year ago, our board unanimously hired Dr. Condes Kaurian as superintendent of schools. She has worked closely with the board to initiate change to better serve our students. We have begun to see the results in this, of this work with improved math scores and a renewed focus on literacy for all students. We continue to improve our specialized programs as well. I want all children to have a well-rounded education that prepares them for the future in a continually changing world. I want to continue to ensure our students are safe. Our teachers and staff have effective tools and professional development that fosters continuous and differentiated instruction and learning. I have been fortunate to have many wonderful experiences that validate the work that we do. One of my most memorable moments was when a parent came to speak at the school board meeting. She said, she had, has her child who was participating in the NECC program. She spoke highly of the program and shared with us that her child spoke for the first time, as he was a non-verbal child. The words that he spoke that night, before she tucked him in, were, "I love you, Mom." Sorry. While those words come naturally for many of us, for her, they were life-changing. I think of that child frequently when we make decisions. There are many stories similar to this, which are, which is why I'm very passionate and dedicated to our children, our school district and our community. Education is the foundation of our community, and I want our schools to continue to be a place where all children feel safe, can grow and learn. It has been my honor to serve the citizens of Derry and to be a voice for all children, and I humbly ask for your vote on March 12th. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Whatever the turnout is after March 12th, I have enjoyed every minute of being on the board. I would like to continue doing the work we've done. We have a lot of new, interesting things that we're working on, the curriculum committee. I'm also on the Pinkerton Committee, and the collaboration has really increased over the past few years. We have a little ways to go as far as the board's togetherness, but the administrative teams have an amazing level of collaboration, very happy with that. I'm also on the NEXT Committee, and I think that NEXT, I was able to negotiate with NEXT to reduce their tuition rate this year, and we're looking at making an adoption to, an amendment to the MOU with them, so that they don't have the same tuition rate as, as Pinkerton, and also to change their budget cycle, so it's more in line with ourselves and Pinkerton. Ask you for your vote. I do think there's more work to be done, and I would love to be the person to help do that. Thank you very much.